Is this the actual sublease here that needs to be signed and moved on?
Hello, Ramona Mona.
I'm marked up.
Ramona?
Ramona?
Yes.
Got it.
You hear me or not?
Yes.
Uh. People who are at the, at the desk need to identify themselves. The la- last meeting with the redevelopment authority, I couldn't identify hardly anyone. So it'd be helpful if, when this, when the elder person speak, if we know who they are.
We will see what we can do with that.
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody ready now? Almost.
That's, it keeps failing on me. I'm not going the long way if you just don't mind.
Yeah.
You ready Cindy?
Um.
Okay.
Mona, do I go into that? Your media?
Yeah, let me see if you're. Right now.
Failed to resolve post name.
Pardon me?
Failed to resolve post name.
Um, it doesn't, it, it just means that we won't have the agenda posted, so it isn't getting anything that's critical to the meeting, we can still continue.
Yep.
Everybody in the audience that needs an agenda got one? Wants an agenda has got one? Okay. Called over the regular common council meeting, Monday, December 21st, 7:05 PM, roll call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Next item is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the rich states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, December 18th, agenda's posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Thank you. Council acceptance of agenda.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Personal appearances, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from December 7th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December 7th, 2020, council meeting.
I'll second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, roll call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee reports, finance.
Yes, finance met this evening. Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $168,911.32.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There were no licenses to approve. Moving on to considering the depot's sublease. We did not vote on this at finance, we moved it direct to council. Before I make a motion, could you give us the highlights, please, of the sublease?
Certainly, this is an extension of the lease for the tenant that's currently in the depot building. The modifications to the lease are, this is again a one-year lease with two, two-year extensions, I believe, would you mind?
Sure.
Twelve-month lease. The rent increases in this year and in subsequent years. And there are extensions of, period, I think it's two, two-year extensions. But I'm trying to find it real quick.
Second page, uh, hopefully.
For, yeah, for 2022, 2023.
Right. So there's two one-year extensions that would appear then from that.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the draft lease before had two, two-year extensions.
Right.
Otherwise, it's the same leases from last year, from what I can see.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, so Edge Events is its own entity now? It's separate from Sustain Edge Marketing, I don't know if that needs to be clarified or not? It's just a simple change of the.
In this lease, it needs to be changed, or, oh, so we should say Edge Events only?
Yeah. Well, not by Sustain Edge Marketing. Yeah, we, we separated them.
Okay, so the lease is with Edge Events?
Yes.
The Chamber of Commerce and the city?
Yes.
Okay. With that modification then.
Okay, did you just say two, 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 one-year?
Two, one-year extensions, is that what it?
Because it doesn't say that on here, it says one, one-year period. Page one.
2022, 2023.
That, that does, but on the front, first page, it says, so tenet shall have extended sublease for one, one-year period? Is that just?
The, the term for the lease is one-year, but there are two extensions.
Two, one-years after that, that's what this is, twenty, okay.
This arrived this morning, so sorry, we don't have it in your packet for you in advance.
Problem, that's why I think it, we need add, add a quick time to just kind of review it, but you hit the highlights. I'll make a motion to approve the depot's subleases with the new changes, including the name change, as noted this evening. I'll second.
Any further discussion?
This is Ann, do we have any say in the amount of rent or how long that the lease is for?
Yes, you do, how it, how the lease works is the city leases the building to the chamber, so our lease is with the chamber, and then the chamber usually negotiates the subleases, but you have to approve this lease, so through that mechanism, you have the ability to have an opinion about that. We just have, in the past, relied on the chamber to, to negotiate the details.
So have we evaluated if that's a fair marketable rent to pay for the amount of space that they're taking?
The city staff has not, I don't know if the chambers process in their deciding this, I don't know what evaluation they have done.
Didn't we do a similar evaluation for the rental of the prior Vets Building?
Well, we were directly renting that, in this instance, again, the chamber is renting the building from the city, and they are, the chambers and subleasing to their tenants. So it's a bit removed.
Right, but we're not charging them rent, the.
The chamber?
Correct.
Correct.
So would this be our opportunity to evaluate to make sure it's fair rent?
Yes.
Before we agree with this?
That would, that would be up to the council.
I personally think we should have it evaluated, because maybe it's wonderful and maybe it's, needs improvement, I don't know.
So the rent's being paid to the chamber?
Correct.
We're not collecting any rent at all from Edge Events or from the chamber?
Correct, at some point, if the rent weren't high enough, there would be some, the city would receive a portion of it, but the rent, at, at this point and over the history, has never produced that kind of a income.
Any, any other questions, or anybody want to make any action on that, or?
I don't want to, but I want to go back to my end, when you get a chance.
Go back to.
Is she still? Are you taking action on that, Ann, or we just, would you just throw that out there?
I was just waiting to see if anybody else had comments, I don't know. Would it be appropriate to table this until we have looked at the fees?
It's my understanding we have a motion as second, correct, do we have to vote on that, and if we would want that tabled, we'd have to vote, we'd have to, no? Okay.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ann, I said that you could move to table if you like.
Okay, I'll move to table.
I'm, I'm a little bit less concerned about, oh, I'm sorry.
The motion, so we.
Okay.
Let's see if there's a second.
Okay.
Is there a second to table? Is there a second to table the item? Is there a second? Three times and no seconds, so the motion failed, that motion failed.
Okay, I'll take it back then. Again, I know, and on rents, it explains for the next couple of years, but if you read the bottom of the first page, it says they only have one, one-year option.
Right, it's one, a one-year term?
No, it's a one-year term, and then you'll have an extension of one, one-year, not two, two, two-twos are crossed off.
Right, it's, isn't it two, one-year extensions?
It says one.
The, the two.
It says one, one-year period for an extension.
Okay.
Does not say two.
It probably should be, make it, one of the two have to change.
Right.
We, we either have to, just for clarity, say change the rent increases so that we only have one set increase through 2022, or we have to change the redaction on that last paragraph, page one, so that it said, subtenant shall have the option to extend sublease for two, one-year periods, twelve months. So I think that was the intent.
Well, the intent looks like.
Yes.
That was clearly the intent, but that doesn't necessarily have the translation as.
Intent for three years total?
That was my understanding.
My too.
So an amendment from the one to two would be, in order, then we continue from there.
An article two.
Yeah, article two, yes.
Yes.
Subtenant shall have the option to extend sublease for two, one-year, I would say, periods, twelve months.
Yes.
I'm going to make that as an amendment, change that from one to two, one-year period, or period.
I'll second.
Need a motion on, or a vote on that motion just for the amendment, then?
That's a, a amendment to the motion, so that needs to be voted on first, we can discuss, but it needs to be voted on first.
Any discussion on the changing the one-year extension to two, one-year extensions? Hearing none, roll call on that.
Burdick?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn? Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
No.
Motion passes, four to one, one, three to one with one extension. Back to the original motion to accept the lease as amended with the name. Any further discussion on that now? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
No.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
It's Dan.
Motion passes, three to one with one extension.
And that's why we moved it on to council, so, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the lowest bidder quote, which was from Miller Bradford and Rissburg Inc. for the grapple bucket in the amount of $3,695.
Second.
Any discussion?
This came in under our budgeted amount, so, just as an FYI.
Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Nothing to approve for number five, as the facade grant for 1 West Fulton Street has been postponed until a future meeting. Motion to approve, instead of a facade grant, it is an ED grant for 106 West Fulton Street in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question, does the amendment that the RDA put on it ride with this?
It should be made here, that amendment should be made at the council level also.
Do you have the exact?
The language that the RDA added to this motion was that the, the display in the front window promote either a business or a non-for-profit organization, and that it rotate every six months. The objective of the RDA and the Plan Commission really is to try to get some of those storefronts that, that are more appealing on the public side.
Yes, this idea came from the RDA chair in the discussions about the commercial apartment concept, so this building is not that, but it kind of has the same issue, that it's not really a business in the window, so I thought this is our chance, so.
So when you say rotate every six months, do you mean like refresh it?
Correct.
Refresh, okay, okay, great. I'll add a friendly amendment to my motion to indicate that.
I'll second that amendment. What did you just say?
Right, yeah.
That's okay to leave all that in one motion then, Bill?
I think we all know what we're voting on.
Right, right. So any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to approve City of Edgerton Resolution 28-20, approving the write-off of 2018 delinquent personal property taxes and non-collectible invoices in the amount of $523.32.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's it for finance.
Thank you, Public Works?
Public Works for some time has been working on a natural lawn regulation ordinance to change the code of general ordinances, and we came up with one that's published here, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the City of Edgerton Ordinance 20-11, amending Chapter 17 to the natural lawn regulations to the ordinance in the Court of General Ordinances.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes. Looks like, it looks like that from Public Works, huh?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Anything from Utilities?
Utilities met on Monday evening, December 14th, we approved a few overpayment refunds, and basically that was it.
Thank you. Plan Commission, we met earlier tonight, approved a couple survey, survey, certified survey maps in the Plata Survey, and then the next item coming up, I've got a letter to read prior to getting action on that, that one. This is addressed to the city administrator. It has been brought to my attention that the developers for the Keenbaum Hamlet Properties have had some citizen state concern about the future density of the R4 zoning. While an overwhelming majority of the planning commission and the city council passed the initial process, the developers are willing to reduce their zoning to an R3, and are not looking to put townhouses as previously stated, but are willing to look at building duplex condos. They would still want to do a planned unit development with something similar to West Meadows condo arrangement. The reason the PUD is important as they, as they feel, and I strongly agree, is that the demand for, from consumers of condos is high for those wanting one-level maintenance, snow and yard arrangements, and currently are nonexistent in Edgerton with nothing available for sale. Most want a higher level of covenants and restrictions than a regular subdivision requires. If the developer just built duplex to sell each unit separately without a condo arrangement, could lead to higher rentals of duplex halves, or owner buying both units of a duplex and renting out the other side. Well, the planned unit development, well, with the planned unit development, the majority, if not all, would be owner occupied and maintained by the homeowners association with rules on the common areas and parking. Being this part of the parcel borders, the Gulf Course area, it is best served for this type of development, and not just single-family homes. Our community desperately needs several housing options, and by agreeing to allow, agreeing to allow this development with the mixed zoning use meets the city zoning plan, and will have a positive effect on our tax base and city budget needs. As long as the developer is not causing any further delay, as long as the developer is not causing any further delay to the zoning land division process, they are willing to make the above less density proposal before all on Monday night's meeting on the 21st. Respectfully, Paul A. Carrier. So that would, could affect this next item on the line here.
Think what we need to do is announce the next agenda item, and then.
Uh, next item is to consider approving the second reading, adopting City of Edgerton Ordinance 20-12, amending Section 22.210 official zoning map for the property east of Dean Street from A1 to R2 and R4 with a PUD.
So move.
At what point can we make some comments on this?
Do we have a second?
Yes, excuse me, second. I thought you were seconding, second.
No, just for the, for the record, since we, now that we've read that into the record, I'd like to make an amendment, and we changed the R4 to an R3, to, in conjunction with the letter that we received, and the wishes of the developer and the community.
Sure, can we do that before we hear any comment?
Well, we can make a second, if there's a second on the motion, and we discuss that, I mean, the amendment, and we discuss the amendment, and then we would.
Okay.
Welcome to comment.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Would it be more appropriate to send it back to Planning?
It has been, uh, it has been passed by Planning, it is, they make a recommendation, council is the arbiter, they get to decide, they do, they can follow Planning's recommendations, they can do basically whatever they want, so there is no need to send it back, it is certainly permitted to send it back.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion if. Borrow your microphone. Tracy, if you'd like to speak.
Sure.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tracy Trannis, I, my address is 605 Dean Street, and appreciate the developer respecting some of the comments that have come from the community regarding this development, and interesting, interesting development that's come up here. I just wanted to make one comment, I read the minutes from last time, and most of my comments were clearly stated there, but there was one thing that was missing. And I know this was part of the consideration in looking at the density in this development, and that was the extension of Wyoming Drive. I am part of a family LLC that owns that property, we have not been approached by the developer or the city to extend Wyoming Drive, so I just want to be very clear that Wyoming Drive is not extending to support the density that was proposed in the south side of this development. So again, concerns with the density in that part of the development is, is a, it's pretty heavy there, and folks that live there will have to drive all the way through the neighborhoods to get to some of the larger access roads like 51 and 59. If you look at some of the other condominium developments in Udderton, you'll see that they're one to two blocks from 51 or 59. This more dense development is a ways away, so that's something to keep, to keep in mind. The other comment I wanted to make is, I've got a bunch of comments here, see if I can find, the, the thing that just came up now is changing to an R3. And my question would be to you, the first proposal required a public hearing, and that was for R2 and R4 with the concept plan. Now, if we're going to be looking at another change in the zoning for this property, does that require another public hearing?
We want to clarify that the R3 is just replacing what was the R4, and they're not the whole, the whole development.
Right.
The rest of it's the R2.
But do, does everyone understand what R3 entails?
You want to?
Well, the, the request is for R3 zoning, and that allows duplexes as conditional, excuse me, as permitted use, and the developer is making, in their statement, saying that they will pursue duplexes. That is their objective now, to pursue duplexes, not four-unit buildings.
Okay, so, so we're looking still at a concept plan, not a final plan?
There will be another stage in the plan development process, so there will be one more public hearing required in the plan development process, that, where the Plan Commission will look in great detail at that plan development area?
Okay, I think that's part of the concern, is we keep talking about looking at this later, looking at it later, at the next meeting, next time, and to me, it seems that we should, before we make a zoning change, what's the plan? What's the plan? Is it duplexes, is it single-family? We're making a fairly long-term zoning change without a definitive plan, so that would, that would be the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, discussion here on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello, okay, I don't have a, a camera on, so I apologize. My name is Tim Hazelton, I live at 600 Dean Street. It's just to, to back, and I, um, so I have a couple things to say, the R3 is a, I think the R3 is potentially something that should be considered again, but that's okay. So in the last week, I've talked to all of the council members, except Sarah, I apologize, Sarah, we didn't connect, but I did talk to all the other council members, either in person, in my backyard, or on the phone. So I think there are some concerns with the development, and I've shared them all with council already. Due to time tonight, I'm not going to go into them all, I think everyone understands where I sit, and the people that I've talked to, the neighbors that have concerns. To back up Tracy's comment about the traffic, so. To back up Tracy's comment about the traffic, so, you know, traffic's one of those planning, neighborhood planning things that nobody really likes to talk about, it's not that exciting. But it's, you know, many people live where we do because we like the neighborhood, and, and good neighborhoods do not happen by accident, they are the direct result of good city planning and good decisions by officials. And so, when you consider R4 and the density and the traffic flow, you know, typically those are located, you know, near outlet streets or highways, it allows a large number of households to exit a neighborhood quickly, efficiently, they want to get to work, they don't want to drive through little residential neighborhoods, they just want to get, get going and go. And the same time, the people who live on the quiet residential streets, they have no desire to have all this traffic from the R4 going through their little quiet residential street to get to the outlet street or highway. So it's like, in this situation, it's reversed, so the, the proposal as we're considering is putting R4 in the southeast corner near the golf course. But without Wyoming Drive connecting across the golf course to give a southern exit to that R4 location, it's going to require the R4 residents, which I don't know what that number is right now, it used to be 48, and the houses across the street from that townhouse complex would be maybe another 12. So in effect, the, the proposal as being considered would be to put, it was to put 48 plus 12, 60 households of the 90 households in the whole development would be in that back corner by the golf course. But now it has no southern outlet, which means two-thirds of the development will have to get out through neighborhood one, which is this newly constructed, you know, streets A, B, C, the, the new construction development area, then they'll proceed to have to go through a second neighborhood, which is the established Dean Street, Cherry Street, Hubert Street, to get to the outlet lines, uh, outlet road or the highway. So I think Tracy, I just think it's poor design. The developer has decided, it's a bold move, right? They've decided they want to put R4 on the golf course instead of single family home to make more money, and that's fine, I have nothing against the developer doing that. But now they're creating a traffic problem for two neighborhoods, both the first neighborhood and the second neighborhood. And I don't think you would want, you know, Cherry Street, which might have 50 cars a day, instead you may have, you know, three to 400, I don't know what the condo number is that they're looking at. But if Wyoming Drive is not going through, my concern is R4 belongs near that outlet, outlet street. Ramona mentioned it was eventually Lad Lane, Casey mentioned it last week. How does this proposal, if Wyoming Drive doesn't come through, how does it impact this proposal? And Ramona said, Blanchard Street can't go through, Henderson can't go through, Dean's a cul-de-sac, they're Cherry and Hubert are, are the outlet streets, but, but that's, uh, Cherry and Hubert are quiet residential streets, and that's a neighborhood. So like, when you're making these decisions and you're like, well, people don't like change, they just don't want people driving by their house, no, we all live where we do because we like the neighborhood. And so by all of a sudden, having this tremendous amount of, of traffic, uh, instead of placing R4 or requiring R4 closer Lad Lane, um, I think that is a, I think that's a, this poor planning decision and the, uh, neighborhood planning decision. Yeah, I'll, that's the only issue I had on traffic, I don't know, I don't want to take up too much time, so I'll stop there, I guess.
Hey, Tim?
Yeah?
This is Jim.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, uh, the, uh, the amendment that we have in right now is to change the R4 to an R3, which at the very, at the very minimum cuts it in half, cuts the, the construction in half. It could be less, easily be less than that, but it would cut it in half from what was proposed, so the traffic, by changing it to an R3, automatically reduced by at least half, you know, which, which was the biggest concern with the, the density. So we've already, you know, we've taken care of that, and the developers already expressed an interest that, that go along with that, and to build duplexes as opposed to duplexes and whatnot, so.
Sure.
Sure, that, we still all have a road coming from that direction, but we, at this point, we just cut the density in half, which was a major concern for pretty much everybody. Uh, so we went, we, we agreed with you on, on that, but...
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I'm not here, I mean, it isn't going to affect me because I live on a cul-de-sac, so I'm not be, I'm bringing this up because I've talked to people on Dean Street and Hubert's, or Hubert Street and Cherry Street, and that's their concern, is that the council just says, oh, I'll pass it, who cares, it's another, you know, instead of 50 cars, it's 500, oh, well. And, and they don't like change, and I just want to make sure I'm representing what they say, so I appreciate that, Jim, if you're part of this cur, um, amending it to R3, because to me that would, um, it's not a perfect arrangement, I still think people in that neighborhood, if they're going to work, you know, they're not real excited to have to drive through two residential neighborhoods to get out, to go to work, and there's just a lot of density there, I just think it's a poorly designed plan, but I'm not sure at this point, other than telling them to go back and move the R4, I'm not sure how that, that would work.
And, and, and you know I've talked to a lot of the Dean Street, Cherry and Hubert also, so I, I do know where they're at, but I felt this was a good compromise, at least cutting it in half was a pretty fair compromise, and granted, that won't go through until phase three, four, whatever, way down the road, but at least, at least we've done something to come up with getting something done.
No, I appreciate that. Um, one other comment on just the, and I don't know if this is Ramona that would know this, but, um, so, so I work with developers, right, and I, I, you know, they're risk takers and they're entrepreneurs, and they are here to make a profit, and they don't build 150 houses in Edgerton unless they make money building 150 houses in Edgerton, and I don't have a problem with any of that, like, I'm, I'm good with that. I feel like they added this box of R4, now R3 at the golf course, obviously to make the proposal more profitable for them or the investors. But you know, our comprehensive plan states, you know, it states the area, the, the northeastern plan development or that corridor may be attractive to higher-end residential development due to the golf course and the environmental terrain, kinda. And there's nowhere else in the, there's nowhere else in the comprehensive plan that suggests an area for higher-end, single-family homes. So Wyoming Drive is full, obviously Fairway Circle's bend full, and we have a tremendous amount of families that, I mean, the city's done a great job in the last 10 years at, at bringing homes here for 200 or 250 that developers have been building. They're not worth, you know, 275, interest rates are low, people want larger homes and, and, you know, bigger lots to build those homes on, and I feel like the city's done, you know, not because it's necessarily your fault, um, because you, you know, nobody's sold any cornfields that you could develop, but, but this area by the golf course is specifically referenced, and the only place in the comprehensive plan that references higher-end residential development is this land near the golf course. It's, I mean, it's technically the whole 200 acres, but we all understand the golf course is the high-valued property on the end. So if we allow R3, R4, R3 in that site, by doing that, like, I think you're going against the suggestion of the comprehensive plan, and the city has no backup of where they are going to encourage a developer to put R1 with larger lots, because developers are not going to come with larger lots and R1, building high-end homes at the golf course, they just don't make enough money. So they want higher density and smaller lots, so the one area that the city had kind of reserved for this next higher-end, larger lot area would be this area near the golf course that they want to put R4 on. So if you're going to say, okay, we're going to allow R4, then where does the city plan to put the higher-end housing, and why then deviate from the comprehensive plan which suggested this area? I think the comprehensive plan suggested the area because it knew there were limited areas around. And the comprehensive plan suggests it, I understand it's a suggestion, but the comprehensive plan, if you read, if you read the comprehensive plan, the language, there is no mandates in the comprehensive plan, a suggestion is as high as it goes, right? When it suggests something, it's, it's saying this is hot, you know, the city looked at it, the consultant hired it, I, I looked at it, we hired all this money to hire the consultant, they said higher-end residential works at this place on the golf course. So when it suggests something, it's the only place in the whole comprehensive plan of all the development areas that reference it, and the city desperately needs $350,000 houses or more that these people want to build on these lots, and here's an example of, finally, the farmer and the two landowners are willing to sell this land near the golf course, and you could make it and designate it high-end residential homes, tell the developer, we're willing to work with you on R3 and R4 further down north of the, north in the development towards Hubert Street and Lad Lane, but we need to designate this top area by the golf course for R1 homes because we have families that want to stay here in town and not go to the Woodlands or the Newville or the Coachmans. And I, I just feel like the city is, it's exactly what happens when, I usually work on the other side with developers, so when, when a developer comes, they never want to do what this comprehensive plan does, they do as much as they can to check as many boxes as they can, but they want to always add high density and smaller lots. And I can say, I'm fine with the city appeasing them on that nature, but the one spot that I feel like you can't sacrifice and go deviate from the, the comprehensive plan is that exact area near the golf course, because that's the only and best place the city has to keep the families, I mean, these families are going to be here the next 20 or 30 years and they want to live here, and they're moving out to Newville because the city isn't planning anything for them. So I, I just think that, I, I just have worked with developers enough that, that's my thought, they, they're putting the R4 there, I understand, they're trying to make a premium on something near the golf course, but I think they're doing it at the expense of the best interests of what Edgerton needs, which is to put hot, to designate an area for high, um, large lots, high-end homes, and then give them R4 closer to Hubert and Lad Lane, that's where it belongs, that's where the traffic would flow out easily. It's just the natural design of that long 200-acre corridor. I just don't think they have, they, they, they don't have the best interest of Edgerton, and I think it's up to this council tonight to tell them, we do have the best interests of Edgerton, and our interest means we need to have someplace designated for these families, and that's the golf course area. All right, sorry, uh, thank you, sorry about the timeline, thank you.
Thank you. So we do have a issue with areas around us for any development, so...
There have been a couple developments that have been proposed, and some that are being proposed now that will have, likely be the kinds of houses this gentleman speaks about.
Would that be the edge of Orchard, towards the...
There was a proposal there, for, yes, for estate kind of houses, there's another subdivision plat that's going through that I would anticipate would be, um, all of that for value of homes that would be constructed in and on the southwest side of the community. And this is a, this 20-acre plat is a piece, as mentioned, of a 200-acre piece of land, there's a whole bunch of land east of here that would be, um, it offers a tremendous environmental corridor on its edge, it will probably also be conducive to those kinds of homes. So this is a small piece of a very large neighborhood, so I think there's ample opportunities around the community to provide a, a variety of housing, which is what we need.
And with the R3, the, the condos, there are people looking for that, um, already, so...
I know that those, that was specific concerns of my constituents living in, in my district, is that there weren't many options for duplexes to either purchase or rent even, so...
Especially being planned development.
Right.
What, what we hear and what I know we've all heard is, people want to come in, they want to be able to sell their homes, come to a place, they can lock the door, take off. It's already being shoveled, it's no, uh, grass mowed, whatever, it's all kept as a unit, and that's what we've heard a lot of, and there just hasn't been any of that proposed up until now. So it's not like, Tim, not like we're just jumping on the first thing out there, I mean, we do have other things that are, that are similar to what you're asking for, the higher end, and as Ramona was saying, I don't know if you caught it, or, but there's plenty of that coming, not plenty, but there's more of that coming, but the planned development for these duplexes and whatnot, condos or, or something that we've been asked for specifically over the last couple of years, so it's not like we're just jumping on it, it is an offer that meets what we've been, had requested to us. What, what's the West Meadows, is that what it is, it's similar to West Meadows?
That's the concept I believe the developer has, has talked about in the, in the memo, is the duplexes on, that are developed in West Meadows.
Because that's specifically what people, something more like that, they want more likely, well, just as, well, as close as I can find it comes.
So we're just looking at this, you know, we're looking at what we're looking at right now, the R2 and the R4 area, but we really don't know what the future holds for any of the rest of that land around it. I mean, I grew up on Blanchard Street, and the end of Dean and Cherry looks just like it did 40 years ago when I was riding my bike up there, so, I mean, there's part of me that thinks like, you know, these opportunities don't come along all the time, and yet, if we're to look at it, if we were painting a painting and we're looking at this entire 200-acre, uh, canvas, I agree a lot with, uh, some of the things Mr. Hazelton said in that this, I mean, unless there's a lot of other areas, um, to the east of there, along the environmental corridor, that you would put R1, it seems the most attractive, and it did, I did go read the comprehensive plan, and that really jumps out at you, I mean, this is what we're talking about, right? The hilly and wooded character of this environmental corridor may make this, make this area attractive to higher-end residential development. Is there much more to the environmental corridor than what the R4 covers?
The art environmental corridor is east of this and is north of this, there's a hilly and wooded cor, the area they're talking about north of this in Dane County, which is part of this 200 acres, is the hilly and wooded corridor, this isn't really a hilly and wooded area. Um, the, but, so there, it's referring to the area north of this, and then if you go east into the next parcel, that's where there's all of that, the cattle that is in the golf course runs north and south, it's a, it's a beautiful area that will be probably very conducive to that kind of development.
And as a planned unit development, we get to see what the buildings look like in there and...
Correct.
We could make it where there are some attractive buildings for people that want to retire there and use them as their summer homes, or...
I, I did, I, I had a question, because this is, I want to make sure I'm remembering correctly, when we, when we first looked at this proposal before and we passed the R2 and the R4 rezon, the first reading, that was because it could, it could be less than R4, right? It doesn't necessarily have to end up being R4, was that...
It could be, um, not four unit buildings, R4 would be the zoning, but yes, they could build single families in R4 district.
Right, right. Would that also apply to if it was zoned R3 as we amended this evening?
They could build single families, correct, that's a permitted use in that district.
That was one of the reasons that I liked that idea, it wasn't set in stone exactly what was going to be on that land at this moment in time.
But if we zone it at this moment in time, they, they have five years to come back before a council and get approved on the details, correct?
Correct.
Or it goes back to R8.
Correct.
All right, and this is the, this is the vote that matters to the developer, just to answer your, Sarah, I answer your question, Sarah, this is the vote that matters, because they can massage the details of condos and duplexes and townhouses, you know, to do the R3, but they need, tonight is the vote that they're watching, because they need to know if the city is going to put R1 and larger lots near the golf course, or if they will actually allow the higher density at the golf course. And I agree with Chris, there's retirees looking for condos, snowbirds luck, and some of them are very luxurious if you go to other neighborhoods in, in, in cities, but this is the vote tonight, that it, once it's R3 and they have that, um, if they get the high-density vote of R3 tonight, they are not going to turn back and say, I'm going to put large lots in the golf course, because that is not a profitable... a profitable, I mean, you wouldn't want to be that type of developer, probably. It's not going to be nearly as profitable for anybody involved.
Paul, you want to speak?
Paul Carrier. I am 131 Dakota Street. I wasn't going to speak because I had written a letter, so it gave my opinion pretty strongly, but I've been selling real estate for 35 years. This area, while everybody has their opinion, look how long it took the country club estates to sell. Those lots sat there the longest because a lot of people can't afford that. We're not talking starter 1,000-square-foot homes. These will be 1400 to 1900 square-foot homes. This is a zoning only. They have to come back, and that's why we went with the planned unit development. They have to come back with something that's acceptable to the city, and there's going to be another hearing for that. So while he's saying this is the only area that's for future large lots, talk about the person who's not developing Wildman Drive. That's where that belongs. And I, and I strongly disagree with him and respect his opinion, but I'm just as strong and believe as strong is what we're doing here is something that is so needed in our community. If we keep shutting doors and having this not go through because of a neighbor that doesn't like this or has an opinion, which respectfully so, we're never going to grow. And, and this land was for sale. Somebody could have bought it to do this. These guys have been working on this for four months with a surveyor to have this done and drawn up. They spent time and money on this. Other people could have come forward and written an offer and done the same thing. These guys are willing to do it. They're reputable, and they're going to do something in conjunction to what the city's plan was. It was, I think, seven, it was unanimous last time and one name, I think, on the, on the planning side. So if you already have your cities recommending this to go forward, you have, the board originally, it said, let's take this next step forward. And now all of a sudden, backpedaling, doesn't make sense. It's not in the best interest of the city at all, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion here at the table on the amendment to change it to R3?
This is Ann. I'd like to reiterate a couple of things that I said during planning. I personally believe that the higher density belongs down closer to Lad Lane so that people can exit onto the main artery and get out to the road they need instead of going through the neighborhoods. And the smaller private roads, I don't believe belong in, I don't support that. I support a standard road like every other road in town because if they pay taxes, they should be able to get their roads plowed and have places to park and everything, just like any other citizen. So with that respect, I will probably be voting no because of the planning of the R3. I do believe in development and I do believe that the developments are needed and I'm for all the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to make more of a comment. I'm just surprised, just from the line of work I come from, when you see a proposal, the client brings their A-game. You want to see yourself using that product. You, you want to see your company using that campaign. I just find this a little abstract that here's what these might look like if you zone it R4. And later we'll come back. Well, you must know somewhat what it will seriously look like if you're going down this road to develop it. So that's just a comment from me that it's, it doesn't work like this in, in other lines of work.
Again, we got a, it's planned unit development, so they'll, they'll be back with precise plans on what it's supposed to look like for that area. I suppose it, it's an expense to get those type of things ahead of time if you don't know for sure if you're even going to be able to do it, so. Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment to change it to R3? Just the R4 section to R3. Hearing none, roll call.
Burden?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Langke?
No.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to one. Now back to the original.
Four to one.
Four to one. I keep forgetting we're short a guy here. Shouldn't, shouldn't forget that with the audience we have tonight. Now back to the original motion. Any further discussion on that?
Yes. So can you clarify what we would be voting on for the original motion?
Just a minute. It would be the map that was presented last month, the last meeting, with the R4 compared to an R3.
So we're voting on R4?
No.
The R4 section.
Being an R3. Thank you.
The whole thing, just, just double up the R4 with an R3.
Just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burden?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Langke?
No.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes, four to one. Okay. The next item is to consider a preliminary two-lot certified survey map for four-gear-drive parcel 626 1203.4.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
Motion passes. Next one is to consider City of Edgerton Resolution 25-20, approve final two-lot certified survey map for four-gear-drive parcel, same one.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Motion passes. And next item is to consider a preliminary one-lot certified survey map for lot east of Dean Street, parcel 6-26-955.
What kind of motion?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burden?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. And the next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 2620, approval of the final one-lot certified survey map for lot east of Dean Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burden?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. And one more item from planning, and that is to consider the adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 27-20, approve the plat of survey for Barberry Lane area.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Radke?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that should be it from planning, redevelopment authority. Anybody want that one?
We met earlier tonight. We took care of the, we discussed the facade grant that didn't go to finance and the, uh, the one D grant, and then the, we talked about the concrete finish area for some bellontal crossing crosswalks that will eventually come to council.
Thank you. And the next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 2920, approving the city's release of a public easement on Marshview Court.
Make that a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll, roll call.
Burden?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Langke?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, the next item is to hear interviews from candidates for District Two Alderperson seat. And we were going to draw the names to see who got to go first, so.
Yeah. So if I may, Mayor?
Yep, yep, yep. This, this is yours.
Okay. So this is what we've been waiting for, gentlemen and ladies. Just go through the process I thought might be helpful. As Mayor indicated, we, as far, we have four individuals that have shown interest in filling this vacancy. So what we're going to do is we're going to draw names to see who will go first. And the reason for this evening is to do a short interview with each candidate. And I believe you all have received a letter from Cindy with three questions, so we'll ask you to address those questions. I'll probably ask those questions for you. And then we will allow enough time, I'd ask that you keep your answers, the total to all three questions short, three to five minutes tops, to allow council enough time to ask some follow-up questions. So, okay, with that, we're going to draw, a name is to who goes first. Go right ahead. And the lucky person, Tim Shaw. So, Tim?
Ron.
Yeah, we're going to draw them all now. Let me put these, put numbers on them.
Use a finger.
What's that?
I don't see it.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And then the second person to go is Cory Steen. Two, okay. The third person is Steve French. And then the fourth person is, I'm assuming, is Matt McAtter. Yes, Matt McAtter is the name. So, thank you, Cindy. Again, I think what we'll do is we'll have each of you come up to the podium, and that way you're also going to be on camera. We'll have you introduce yourself and state why you're interested in the position, what makes you qualified for the position, and what are you anticipating in accomplishments in this position. And again, I'd be happy to re-ask the questions if you forget what they are once you're up here. So, Tim Shaw?
Good evening. My name's Tim Shaw. I live at 439 Leslie Drive. I am, I've been a resident of, of Edgerton for about the last 18 years. I have three daughters, two of them graduated from the Edgerton School District. My youngest daughter is a freshman currently in, in Edgerton. I am an active member of the community. I've been the president of the Edgerton softball, fast pitch softball. And I also have been, I'm currently the treasurer of the Edgerton Youth Soccer Association. I'm big into sports. I, I enjoy sports. And I, I'm also a sports official. So everything from the little ones all the way up to the men's league, I've done the, the Albion Tigers, umpired them for baseball. I do football, basketball, baseball, soccer, pretty much anything that has a ball, I'm, I'm interested in officiating. So I think that I, my roots within the community is one of the reasons why I'm very interested in being part of this, this council. I have, one of the reasons why I think I'd be a good fit for the council is I've got 20-plus years of experience in, I'm a, a marketing, marketing guy. I've worked for both privately-held companies as well as multinational organizations. I've always been either in product management or brand management on the marketing side. I am responsible for P&amp;L statements as well as developing and building budgets, both from a marketing point of view as well as from a sales point of view. So if we look at sales goals, we build that budget from the ground up. Similarly, for marketing, from everything, from promotions to campaigns, all of that obviously takes money. So we look at it holistically, pull it all together, develop a budget for a, a full year, and then obviously manage to that budget. So I think that probably answers the first two questions. Now, the, the third question is what I see moving forward. I want to continue the great work that you guys have, have done. I think there's a lot of good things that are going on. To be specific, bringing in businesses, bringing in industrial, I think is important. Now, as we hear, there's a balance to everything. We need to make sure that while we're very interested in bringing in, we have to listen to our constituents and make sure that we have a balance. And of course, budget is always part of the, the thing that we need to, to, to keep in mind as we go through this. Also, I think we've done a, a nice job. You all have done a nice job with the infrastructure and the roads. I want to see us continue that because there's a lot of good things that we are looking to accomplish here in Edgerton, and I want to be part of it. And I think I would be a valued member and a, a member to this council that will help continue doing those great works. Sorry, I'm going to quickly go through the, so the other part that I, I did want to say, being a sports official, I think that, as you can imagine, I may have been yelled at once or twice, and understanding that, similar to what you guys do, you take in the facts, you take in what you see, you take in what you know, you know the rules, and you make decisions based on what you know. Sometimes they're not popular. That's part of the, that's part of the gig. And I understand that, and that's something that I can bring to the table as well. So hopefully I kept within five minutes, so now I'll pause and if I can answer any questions for y'all.
And I think this is an opportunity for council members, if anybody has any questions, wants clarification, now's the time. Let's see.
Because that makes it, makes it easy.
Yeah. So some of my questions that I had, had thought about, you had already kind of answered. How you, what you'd like to do, you had indicated you would like the opportunity to help guide our future. My question was how. You had answered that, so I can't, I don't feel like I want to ask it again.
I did. So one of the things I probably should have said earlier than, than right now, I was on the Edgerton School Board. That was something, one of my experiences that I've, I've had. It was a very fulfilling experience. It's something I, I learned a lot about and, and being on that council, and would like to continue that in this type of, of scenario.
Anybody questions?
What was your biggest takeaway from the, the school board? I mean, as far as fulfilling, you say you fulfilled one?
Absolutely. So I, I would say, knowing that, when we, when we look at the priorities of our, our school district, kids, you know, faculty and staff, and then the facilities, and then you have to budget, or then you have to look at all of that, what is best while balancing the money, right? And so fulfilling, I was part of the, I was on the, the board. When the new renovations hit, that was fulfilling. To know that our kids are going to be in a facility that will help promote their learning, and I can say that even though we're all going through COVID and all of our kids are at home and it's a very difficult time for all of them, I think they have set, it's the, the board and the administration have set themselves up to be as successful as possible. And then once we're past all this, it's going to continue to grow. And there, it's going to be a better space for our students to grow and to learn within Edgerton.
Good. You mentioned, somebody else was supposed to speak?
I was just going to say, as a follow-up to that question, what was your most frustrating, what's the most frustrating parts or was sitting on the school board without having to?
Yeah. As with everything else, it is, I, I believe strongly in good, solid discussion. If we have a bunch of yes-men and women, that doesn't accomplish anything. So I think it is important to have those discussions and to have respectful disagreements. There were times when I was frustrated at those respectful disagreements, and that's okay. That, it, that, that is absolutely the best way to continue to move things forward.
Thank you.
You mentioned prioritizing and balance a lot out, when, when you're here with us, or, you know, we've got a, same, same thing, we've got budget first, costs, needs first, wants, citizens first, you know, your district versus the whole, how would you prioritize, or guesstimate that you would prioritize while you're looking at things from this board?
So, it, it's very difficult for me to stand up here and say, I would do city first, then the district second, and then, so I don't think, one of the things I do have is an open mind. I have an analytical, I like numbers, I'm a numbers guy, I'm a financial person, even though I'm on marketing, which obviously cr- uh, requires some creativity. So, I'm open enough to know that I don't think I can stand here and tell you, I will always say, Ed, City of Edgerton, one, District Two, second. I think you need to look at what is in front of you, and then make the educated decisions based on the facts and the rules that, that are, uh, that we abide by. Thanks.
This is Ann, I'd like to ask if, um, you're not picked for this position, will you be running in this election?
So, um, I, it's a good question, I, so, before, right now, I wouldn't have even, I didn't even think about it. So I don't have a good answer for you, Ann. Um, I think I am interested enough, especially doing the research that I've done about here, that I think that, yes, I would be very interested in, uh, in running. Uh, truth is, I'm also can, I was considering, depending on what happened here, considering the, the school board again. Um, but I don't think it's prudent to do both, so I am deciding to prioritize, uh, this, this, uh, this council. That was kind of a wishy-washy answer, I'm sorry, Ann, but that's, uh, I hadn't thought of it before right now.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Anybody else, questions?
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kim, thank you. All right, let's see, for two, we have Cory Steen.
Hello, my name is Cory Steen, I live at eight one five West Fulton Street. As per your question, started loading you. I've, I've always been interested in serving the community here, and have done so briefly in the past on this board, and enjoyed it immensely. So, I love this community, I've lived here in this community probably for, since, oh, it was probably eighty-nine, like that. I've put through three, working on five kids through the school system, and, uh, I wanna see this, this town stay small, but yet grow at the same time, grow healthily, not go too crazy, but still have that small, small town feel. Second one, what makes me qualified, obviously qualifications, I've been on this board, I've also been on, uh, several other boards, there's earning board of appeals, utilities board, library vice chair, housing authority vice chair, uh, you see, there are several others, I can't think of the right moment, uh, definitely those are what qualify me for being on this board. And what am I anticipating accomplishing? I agree with the former person's feeling, that I would love to see that things keep going in the direction that they have been going in most cases, and support the work that we've been working towards those past several years. In the past year, I think we've all learned that things can change drastically, and that we have to learn to rely on one another in smaller groups. We can't expect the state government or the federal government to help us out all the time, and we have to learn how to help ourselves, and we have to be set up to do that ourselves, and that's where I would like to see us be able to do things like that, and be set up where we can, we can support ourselves more. I think that's about it. Sorry, I'm just kinda short of breath, and of course, I just, uh, no payback here, just been through some health issues. Well, so everybody knows, all healed, hundred percent, charitable. I have, I'm here, just coming down the other side of a throat cancer thing that's totally curable, just a matter of building my strength back up. Any questions, other questions?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Anybody have any questions, they'd like to? One thing I've, I've kinda, I came up with Cory.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you had indicated in your letter, and also tonight, um, about have, keeping it a small town, but also grow.
Yeah.
So, what does that mean to you?
It gives us a sense of community, where we have the community, we have the small town feel, but yet we can still have industry. I mean, you can have industry, like, you know, we, our town is set up, we have industrial parks, where we have things, but yet we also have, uh, city parks for people. We have our, our downtown shopping area, we have all that stuff to give us kind of the, a kinda like, say, the normal Rockwell kinda thing, you know, we have going on downtown. I like to keep that, but yet be able to afford to keep that by having the industry that we do, we do allow it to have come in.
You also indicated in your, um, letter of intent, um, with all our, our businesses and citizens having such a strong community view, that no outside forces can have much of an effect on us. What do you classify as an outside force?
Well, even the, the pandemic, that, that's more what I'm thinking, you know, I was thinking of pandemic at this point, uh, we have learned through this pandemic, yeah, we could all just crumble and, and, and fall, but as a community, we all get together and we all say, okay, hey, this is what we've gotta do. We've gotta, we've gotta follow the, the health guidelines that are given to us, we have to do our best to stay healthy, one to another, treat each other with respect by doing the things that we need to do to stay healthy ourselves. And that's why I have to kinda say nothing, 'cause it's worse than the pandemic. If you can, if you can make a better pandemic, I guess you could probably make a few just about anything, that's, go, that's the line I was thinking on.
Does, Ann, do you have any questions?
Yes, I would like to ask Cory the same question, if you are not picked to take this position, will you be running?
Oh, definitely. I will definitely run, and run, and run, until I get back on the board.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim, or Ann, or Casey, or Sarah, anybody? Nope.
Cory, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who do we have next? We have Steve French. Hello, Steve?
Hello. Uh, as you, no, uh, my name is Steve French, I live at seven twenty-seven South Main Street. Um, I've got, uh, two grown boys now that went through the Edgerton School System here, um, also one other stepson. And the reason that I've put my name in, or, uh, why I'm interested, is, uh, I guess, as you're mentioning, alluded to it earlier in the meeting, how, you know, having ridden your bike in a field that looked the same way for forty years and everything like that, it, uh, growing up here, I would like to see the, the city, as everybody has mentioned as well, tie, ticker row, grow in a smart way, uh, increase our tax base, uh, the, the good housing, uh, and also, um, filling some of the buildings that we've, uh, we have in, in the downtown and around, I wanna be able to see the businesses grow. I mean, I know we're not probably gonna see Caterpillars, or Dana's, or, uh, Dorsey Trailer type, um, large manufacturing anymore, but I think we've got a good thing going with our industrial parks, and, uh, we do a pretty good job of attracting that type of businesses or, uh, to the area, I'd like to see us continue to do that more. I've, uh, tried looking through the master plan and, uh, getting ideas that way. But, smart growth, um, again, I, I, I think we're doing a good job, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel, uh, I'd like to continue to support that, and, uh, again, keep our, our city headed in the right direction. One of the reasons I think I'm qualified for this is, uh, as it, as I grew up here, ended up going into the military, uh, retired from the US Air Force and the Wisconsin National Guard as a master sergeant, I was effective team leader and, uh, team member. I also work currently for the Sheriff's, uh, Dinkley Sheriff's Office, like, around the Town and Cottage Grove area, and I serve as contract deputy there. Uh, it's not something that you just move into, you have to be selected for, interviewed, selected, much like this process. Uh, I previously worked as the Albion Town Constable, and after that, I worked as a contract officer for them. Uh, I did that for eleven years, and, uh, I was kinda part of their meetings as well, so I got to see how Albion works, and, uh, through their issues that they've had in the past, and that sort of thing, by sitting in on them, uh, and trying to address their concerns, uh, through, uh, by means of being a police officer. I'm a trainer and instructor at the Sheriff's Office, uh, I'm all for you with that. However, uh, I've got my degree in criminal justice management. I was also a past member of the Edgerton Fire Department, I've tried to stay, uh, busy in the community, or serve in a volunteer sense, um, although I've not been on city council, I've volunteered in the zoning and board of appeals, uh, historical commission, the city hall committee, it's a fine building that we're in now, uh, the downtown building over here, I'm part of that committee, and also served as the, uh, the police commission, was a member there, and participated in the Holler River. Uh, I'm a local member, lifetime member of the VFW, Albion Academy, Historical Committee, uh, Academy, and, uh, Fulton Sonic Lodge down the road. Again, I wanted, I'd like to see Edgerton to continue broadening its tax base, um, I really like the idea of taking care of our businesses that we have as well, not just focusing on new business coming in, but, uh, it's important to focus on the businesses we have. Uh, I think it's great that IKI is looking to grow and, um, move in the community and stay here. I've often found, or I found this, uh, this opportunity, uh, came at a good time. I have time now, at, at night, and can focus on, uh, being dedicated to this venture, so. Yeah, I like what we're, we're guys are looking at too, as far as filling against some of the buildings, Chase, Chase Bank, uh, and those types of places, so. I guess that's about it.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that I totally understand, um, what you think you'd like to bring to the table, or anticipating accomplishments in this position?
Uh, I'd like to continue working in the direction we're going, like I said, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel, but I'm definitely here to support. Uh, I know you can't make everybody happy, but being transparent, um, listening to the concerns, and ultimately always remaining professional, and I think that that's, uh, a way that we can gather all the information, and, uh, try and make the best decisions to, try and keep all the different parties involved in the decision process. One of the things, I guess, what I do for a living is listening to people, trying to filter through the facts, and, uh, provide a good outcome.
Good. In your letter, you had indicated you'd like to see our tax base grow, and you had mentioned that this evening too, and continue to bring business to the area. Any thoughts on how you think you could help with that, or thoughts that might do that?
Well, I know that there's been a lot of effort brought, put into that, I'm not naive to think that, you know, that you guys as a body, uh, have not tried doing that in over a long period of time. Again, I, I'm probably not here to reinvent the wheel, or have the, the magic bullet, so to speak, but, uh, like, you know, some of the stuff I've seen, you know, with our city website, and working with, uh, marketing, and, uh, making ourselves appealing as we can, uh, you're just looking at, even looking at the master plan, there's obviously stuff there that is way beyond my comprehension at this point. I'm a quick study, again, uh, I listen, and I can work harder, and, and, uh, try to keep, I've been promoting those, those things.
Good. Anybody else have questions?
This is Ann, I'll ask my standard question, if you're not appointed, would you run?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Steve. Ann, number four, Matt McIntyre, hello, Matt.
It's kinda different being on this side. Yeah, um, I like local government, that's number one, why are you interested, like, with the government, and I like it back to the community, like we all do, and stuff. I was born and raised in the city my whole life, played sports through the whole school system, baseball, basketball, football, any nap after school, or Red Baron Tamara, if we're not, get back to the old days. Um, it's, it's, it's an honor to serve the public and our community, uh, to have, uh, to raise the most public, uh, impact as we can to the citizens, the neighborhoods, developers coming in, uh, you name it, everything else, and working with the departments, make sure things run smoothly as possible, um, and, uh, as a local official, it's very important to engage the people, trying to bring the social fabric even stronger back to our community, it's always a goal to make it better, 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 and stuff like that. So, um, it, it encompasses a very good, uh, listening, uh, carefully, um, adhering to the rules and regulations that we, uh, that we adopted, that ordinances, you know, over the years, of course, I, we've walked about twenty-five years here, developed a lot of things, they change once in a while, but we constantly try to improve them and so forth, and, um, to listen as many people as possible conducting the business for our, our city, as past results have proven, that's where we are today, as a great city, so it's not concerned, that's, and we all think so. But, kinda going in, into the number two, with the, um, why you, what are you anticipating, that, um, you know, we, we've accomplished a lot of things over the years, the city has, I was kinda playing a little part of it too, and speaking of, listening earlier about the planning commission, Chris Azam's planning commission, I was a chairperson for about ten years, and we had listened to a lot of developers, you know, Hayne Road, we had developed, we annexed that in out there, listened to Schultz and Fox, whoever, since that name's, uh, Wes Meadows out there with Rudisil's, and we got together and we listened, and, uh, fellas worked with the staff as much as possible, how it's gonna be developed with zoning, very important, remember the early stages back in ninety, thirty-two thousands, where we're at now, and, uh, we, we, you know, we, there was the Hayne Road, Orchard Heights, Tronson Road, Tobacco Valley, there's a lot of deals, so, big experiences, we're enjoyable seeing the city grow, what we did over the years, and, um, being on the chairperson planning fresh, and working with Kirsten, Paul, and Ramona, and various other people, it was very rewarding, that's where it's nice to see, when you get in your car right around, going to work around, we can just see what we've accomplished for our city, the history, that's Casey, you know, the tobacco stuff, the tobacco warehouses, we helped create it all, we annexed the hot, closed almost four hundred acres into the city of the last one, I curse, curse people, you know, and, and that helped spur good development, it did, uh, and as everybody said, there's a couple hiccups here and there happen, but you just work through it, you listen, and you try to gauge, what's the better, best thing for the community and so forth. And then the, the Tiff districts, we helped create, all those guys, in, in the current council, uh, they've been very, uh, helpful for the city, the downtown, North Side Business Park, it was very enjoyable working on that type of stuff, and I, I just like to kinda continue doing that, that type of, uh, very rewarding and, uh, uh, positive type of development. Kinda going into the- Kind of going into the number three type of thing, and, and over the years, you know, as, as you all know, the Dana Caterpillar Plant, we did a lot of stuff there and there's some stuff happening right now. We're from Future Development with IKI and stuff, it's very exciting to us, you know, these TIF district really work. And we were more, kind of the concept back in the nineties about these TIF district, and it's really been quite awesome with the city and all past council members and past mayors have did and stuff, and the current mayor and stuff. But, what I'd like to see is continued more well-balanced growth. You know, easy said, but you gotta listen and, and to the developers and the citizens and the neighborhoods and stuff to make it well-planned out as, as much as possible. And, and also to, to, to keep our, our city as safe as possible, we have a good police force. I've always, when I was on the council, always try to adhere to the department, but they, they're here all day long, you know, five days a week, you know, we work during the daytime or some people are getting their retirement age. But, all support our departments and that, that's what keeps our cities, our cities safe. And we did about, has involved possibly twenty, twenty-five roads over the years. It was, it was tough at first, you know, because we had raised back in the nineties the water sewer race. But, it had to be done, something you have to make the hard decisions and it's been very good for the city. Looking at the ground, the water sewer lines were just original from the early nineteen hundreds. So, that was a very positive thing. I like to keep moving forward and stuff like that to help renovate in our, our infrastructure and streets and sewer lines and, you know, on and on and on stuff. So, there's a, I know a lot of big people here and stuff. Anyways, that's what someone that might talk this year, does like to be involved with the city as much more possible for another term, and that's it, and I'm at that retirement age and it's put a little, little extra time into it.
Good. So, I have a question. So, I've heard you talk about all the things you really liked about being on council, council in the past. So, that's all great. What maybe would be some of your frustrations?
Well, some of it was the, the hardest part sometime was, speak or not, is the development issue. Well, it came up tonight. It isn't hard, but you have to listen carefully and think about the long-term effect, what the zoning does. That was hard, it was, in some areas in the city. The North Side Business Park, it was kind of touchy, a couple areas here and there, out of the road related and stuff. But, that, the, the development is, is fun, it isn't always easiest, but sometimes when it's, some of the things are hard, but it makes you think better, you know? You, you, you put your mind to it and you come out with a, a product that is really good. That, really, being in government, the hardest part is just trying to, what's actually easy and something that's hard makes you, but just listen, listen to these people, fellow council members, you can tell by their eyes and, you know, what they think and work collectively together and try to do, does it always work hundred percent, tell them? You know, not, there's, there's some three, three time breaks over here, so it doesn't always happen. But, you have to respectfully do things. When you walk out of this room, we're all together and this community together, you know? So, I, I might have jumped around a little bit, Dirk Candy, but that, that part, it was just, it was time consuming, I should say, with some of the development, with the P U D we did, the Scut Cave Community down there, the old schools, if you looked at that stuff, developers came in, they wanted to do X, Y, and Z. I worked with staff inside, while Holliday City Living Center would want to be shaped and developed with fences and things, but you would work to help and you talked to maybe a couple council members in the staff department to get it worked out in advance. So, being hard can be, can be helpful sometimes, make you think.
Anybody else? I think Ann has a question.
I do, ditto. Will you be running, Matt, if you don't get appointed?
I don't know, probably not, because this term here is, you know, I'm getting a little older, I could put a couple more years' life and start traveling the world, the United States and stuff. And I, I still got a lot of get up and going me, I do. Otherwise, I would never even came here to do this at all. And I want to thank the three people too. Tim, you did a good job. Stevie, I've known you many years and Cory, I've certainly been a council with you. It just makes me, you've still got it in you, to try to give just a little bit more, it's like the eighth and ninth inning, you know? Matt McPare has a lot, another beginning or two, a little left in him, I think. But I have a lot of things going on in my life too, and if so, if something happens, you know, it'd be nice, but, you know, I just want to give a little more of my time to the citizens of this, and the department.
Anybody else have any questions for Matt? No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, in a wrap-up, I think on behalf of the council, I'd like to thank all four of you individuals. The next step is that, and, and Sam, this one's for you to help us with. We're asking citizens to contact anybody on the council to provide any input that they'd like on any of these individuals. So, we'd like to hear from any citizens and they can contact anyone, anybody here on council.
Preferably District two.
Dude, I'm taking your calls, I'm just kidding.
Can I, can I follow up real quick?
Yeah, please do.
To the four members, I, I'm hoping that you're all open for citizens to call you directly also. I mean, if they, they happen to, I'm sure you will, because most people put this out there, you may be getting questions, I don't know, but you may be.
Absolutely. Other citizens may have questions that we didn't think of here tonight.
I mean, we, yeah, but we do prefer to call us also.
And then the next step in the process is the council will discuss and select the candidate at the January fourth council meeting, which is the next council meeting scheduled. And then this individual will be sworn in and take the oath at the January eighteenth meeting.
Is it appropriate for us to be at the fourth or should we?
Absolutely, if you'd like to be at the fourth. Actually, a citizen is encouraged to attend any council meeting.
It's also, given that, the situation, and if you all would have said something different, I would have respectfully understood.
Yeah, nope. And, like I said, we're just going to kind of have a collective discussion, open discussion and nothing will be in closed session, it's all open and we'll select the candidate, but we'll not be taking that oath until the next meeting, the eighteenth. Any other questions by the four candidates?
I'd, I'd like to thank all four of you for coming down and expressing your interest and I'd like to thank Candy for covering this because I have very little say in this action, so it's, it's up to the council members. So, she's taken the lead on that and good luck to all of you and, man, it'd be, it'd be tough to have some large seats available.
Sam, I'd like to reiterate and stress that we do, and we are soliciting citizen input for this. I mean, we would really appreciate it because it is their district and it is, they are going to represent them, so please stress that first. Okay.
Did you get that, Sam? Okay.
Anybody else have anything for before, move on to the next item?
Chief, you got anything for these guys?
Looks like he's waving.
Yeah, you're looking pretty comfortable there, Chief.
I know.
They're giving Howard ideas.
Thank, thank you all.
Thank you all for coming down.
Next item, Mayor, all the persons and staff reports. Well, let's see, this is the last meeting of the year, the last meeting that Randy Orne is a full-time employee of the city, so I'd like to thank him for his years of service and congratulate him on his retirement. About time, you know, he is a little older than I am, so. Thanks, Randy. I know you're not out there right now, are you? No. And being as close to the end of the year, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year and throw in all the other ones that I can't name off because I don't remember them all. If anybody else has anything? Otherwise, we can look at that number eleven and adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brooke?
No.
Bronn?
Yes.
Wang?
Yes.
I think that passed, it might have been four to one.
Good save you.
I get that one right this time, well.